There we go. Okay, we call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of East Hampton. Today is Wednesday, October 23rd. We have a couple administrative things. I'd like to start by saying that we do have two hearings this evening. The expectation this evening is that we will put an hour into each one. If after that first hour we have not concluded where we need to be, if we're rendering a decision, we will then extend the application and we will set a time to meet again for that application. So first thing, to order businesses and administrative items, as I said. Approval of the minutes from the August 28th meeting, as there was no meeting in September.
So move.
So move.
The morning submitted.
All right. Are there any correspondence requests or anything from any other boards, Jamie? No? Okay. I will offer a public speak time, but before I say that, if you are here to speak in relation to either of the hearings that we have before us, your opportunity will be given during those times, but if there's anybody who has any other things they would like to speak about that is not on the agenda for these evening. Okay? And with that said, it happens that the first item on the business is an application by Chris Lee of Backyard ADUs of 17 Spring Street, East Hampton, on behalf of Chandrel, Chandra, Lenell, and Sarah Hunter of 8 Mayer Street, East Hampton, seeking a special permit to create a detached accessory apartment on an existing single-family residential lot in accordance with Section 8.5 and Section 12.7 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. The subject property is located at Mayer Street, parcel ID 157-38, and Zonew residential, suburban B R 10. Mr. Lee?
Thank you.
If you could kindly tell us what you have in mind.
Absolutely. So I will, I'll try to keep it short because I think there are going to be lots of questions and we want to get to everything in the hour. So my name is Chris Lee and this is my-
If you could address us, you are appealing us?
Okay.
Okay? They are here to view and ask questions. They then ask us and we will either answer them or you will have a chance to answer them.
Okay, absolutely. So we are requesting approval to install a detached accessory apartment in the rear yard of 8 Mayer Street on behalf of Shander, Lenell, and Sarah Hunter. We, the apartment will be lived in by their mother, who is our-
The Shander's mother.
The Shander's mother, sorry. Who has moved to town to help care for their son. And they have the expectation that the mother will also age in place in this unit as it is accessible. A few things I do want to point out with the application, we, as it is a unique lot with dual frontage on Grove and Mayer Street, some of the things that we tried to do was make sure that it was blending into the neighborhood on Grove Street, even though it's an accessory apartment to 8 Mayer Street.
Yep.
Doing things like upgrading exterior siding, exterior window trim, putting a nice door on it, a nice pergola on the front, and trying to match setbacks with the houses that are in line with it. So it doesn't look like it's too far back or too far forward in the existing neighborhood. And with the setbacks, as there was a note from Jamie, there, we did have questions on interpretation of the accessory structure setbacks, as this is, this doesn't fit neatly into a category, but we think it does fit in with a primary structure due to the location and to fulfill the accessory apartment guidelines of meeting the character of the neighborhood it's in.
Okay. All right. So the unit you are building is an accessory to the house on Mayer Street. And access to this residence, is that going to be from Mayer Street or from Grove Street?
So it will be from Grove Street. And I did, I did talk to the Board of Public Works about adding parking, and they said they would not have a problem with doing that, it would just go through the standard curb cut permit process. So we're looking to add one additional space to meet the accessory apartment requirements of four, two for each dwelling, and ensuring that at least one of those is on Grove Street to avoid parking in the grass or leaving a car in the street and ensure that you don't have to, people don't have to walk through the backyard.
Okay. And so there'll be a driveway, I know somewhere on here you had a plane that showed a driveway. Here it is. There it is somewhere. So looking at, looking from Grove Street, the driveway will be on the right-hand side of the structure?
Yes, next to 11 Grove.
Okay.
And just a one-car spot.
Okay. And utilities for the structure?
So it will be connecting into the existing water and sewer of 8 Mayer Street.
Okay.
And we have validated that that will work. I have spoken to Greg over at the Water Department, and we should be able to do that. We'll actually be upgrading the water supply as part of the project as well, which they requested that we do do as it's getting old.
Okay. And there's pitch on there to be able to meet the requirements for sewage?
Yes. Yep.
The distance from the where-
You're answering me?
Sorry, sir. I'm Kevin Schnell. I will be acting as the general contractor of well-hand improvement. The distance from the new auxiliary unit to the existing house and where we'll be going in will give us plenty enough pitch to get down to where we tie in.
Okay. All right. Okay, questions from the board?
Yes. I'm surprised you didn't give us a site plan showing the lot, the existing house, and the proposed accessory apartment and the setbacks.
So there was, there was one attached to-
No, there is not a site plan that we got.
There was, yeah, there was one. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, there was a long version of this and-
No, we, I don't think we-
This is my topic.
Well, it didn't come out in my print. I love it.
I have a small version if you'd like to see it.
And, yeah, and I think I have a problem with your interpretation of the setbacks, even though I understand why you did it. This is clearly an accessory building, and the regulations are very clear that an accessory building has different setbacks. It's an unusual lot, but it's still an accessory building. It's even called an accessory building.
Yes.
And I, I just think it has to be 30, 25, and 25, and if the dimensions on the accessories map you gave us are correct, it'll fit.
It will.
You might have, you own it as much yard as you would like, and that's unfortunate, but I don't, can't get around the setbacks. That's an accessory building.
And that was one of the things we wanted to hear directly from you on. What we were trying to do is to meet the special, the special requirement for accessory apartments that it fits with the neighborhood, and because we're in a unique lot, we wanted to make sure it looked like it was in line with the existing property.
Well, if this is the next-door neighbor's house, if this went back 10 feet, it would be in line with-
Yeah, we, we were kind of looking at them as a whole, but-
I, I'm familiar with the street. I've lived down the street and I have a dog, and we walk this neighborhood.
Sure. So I think that could, and that's where Chris and I were kind of going back and forth as far as following the regulations of both standard setbacks and what the accessory dwelling units are requiring, and there's a part in that description of the code that says matching the neighborhood. And from an aesthetic standpoint, from my opinion anyway, and you living on the street, I can see-
I don't live on the street. I live in the neighborhood.
Live in the neighborhood. The question then becomes, what, if we go back to 30 feet, it felt like to us that we now are offset from the way that you would view the rest of that street if you looked at it from down the row.
What's here, talking about the special permit guidelines-
Correct.
As opposed to the hard and fast zoning regulations. And to me, the zoning regulations have to be met, and then we look at the special permit criteria.
Sure. And one of the problems we had in trying to interpret the zoning regulations for setbacks was it didn't, it didn't, it didn't talk specifically to something like this. It was, it seems that it was, it was trying to think about smaller structures like a shed, and there's specific language in their items other than a private garage. So we didn't feel like it was talking to what we were going to be building and the scenario where we're going to be creating what looks very much like a single-family home on Grove Street.
Well, and the fact that you're, you're saying that it's going to look like a single-family home on Grove Street, then the front yard setback for that lot, which is 20 feet, does that then make more sense? I'm asking, I'm not saying.
No, and I understand why they did it, but to me, it's, it's an accessory building. The regulations to me are very clear that accessory buildings have to be 30, 25, and 25. That's all.
Well-
If it wasn't an accessory building-
Okay. Well, and I think if it was inverse, that if this regular setback was 30 feet and an accessory building was 20 feet, then I would agree, I would definitely say the 30 feet. I'm, I'm, yo.
I'm just, I don't think the regulations make a lot of sense, but they are the regulations.
Not the first time we've run into that, Chris.
And that's, that was our intent with this, is trying to get in front of you and say, here's our reason for tuning it, and how do we interpret that?
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you draw a line from corner to corner of the adjacent houses, you know, closest point to the street, you know, you want to be back behind those at a minimum. So that looks more like 30 feet. So I think the front yard setback needs to be at 30 feet, and if you're going to follow that and we go along with the idea that it is a accessory structure, which with a name like ADU, sounds like detached accessory structure, it should be zoned as an accessory structure.
Another question, does it have a basement?
No, it doesn't. It's going to be a crawl space foundation.
Okay. So, 30, 25, 25, right?
So that would require, you guys proposed a 15-side setback?
Mm-hmm.
So it would have to be, to get to the 25, we'd have to move it-
Yeah, and there is space to do that. We're not, we're not going to push back too hard if that's what the committee and the neighborhood generally is.
Okay, yeah, there's room, there's room for that.
Yeah, the overall length of the lot is 100 feet. Okay, 39-foot structure, 50-foot left and right setback, it still leaves you 10 feet left and right to move with. Okay? Now, the driveway, you show it basically just being one car parked deep?
Yes. Yep.
I guess I'm concerned about the aesthetics of that on the street, but I look at the house to the left on Grove Street, and it does appear that they have a parking spot in front of their house. Well, to a degree, there's the aerial-
Yeah, we were trying to minimize the introduction of more blacktop on the street. We didn't want to put a giant driveway because we didn't want, there's already, we didn't want to limit more grass than we needed to. And one of the spots that's required is in the existing driveway as well.
Okay, I think what we're also running up against, aside from any other regulations, is keeping these at a price that can make them affordable. And if we extend the driveway too much in, that's, that can be a pricey expedition to get into, and just trying to keep the total price at an affordable price for the homeowner.
Well, if it's going, if the house is going to be 30 feet back, that's almost two parking spaces long.
It is.
So that should be a problem.
Yeah. Well, is your expectation to just make the parking lot 20 feet, 20 foot deep and 10 foot wide?
That was the plan, and we were going to connect it with a nice stamped concrete path to get to the front door, which would be longer if we're 30 feet back. We would just extend that curve and connect it right, right to the house.
Okay. Okay. The, the units themselves, they meet the code requirements, the energy code requirements and everything like that of-
So where they're being made, they have a HERS rated on site-
Okay.
And we will be working with Matt Turcat from Powerhouse to do a final analysis of the, of any stretch code, energy code requirements for the, for a new construction.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of the goal is to make them as environmentally friendly as we can. Heat pump, heat pumps, heating and cooling, flashing with spray foam with bats.
Part of what my company does is environmentally responsible building solutions, and that's going above, we attempt to go above and beyond with any home or attachment or addition we've put in, and that's what our goal is with these, is even above, because we, they're coming in pre-made, we have a lot of control over exactly what we want done that you don't necessarily have in the field. And then, you know, once we're setting, going above and beyond even what the factory's doing with air sealing and bringing ourselves up to any local bylaws and then some, with keeping in, again, a cost-effective way of doing it, using spray foam as a air sealing and everything else will be above the stretch code by those standards.
Okay. John, questions? Okay. All right. So in an effort to, let me, let me stop right there. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, not as a public question, but on behalf of the applicant? In other words, is the homeowner, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to move in.
Sure. Yeah, you are the owner, you can-
I'm the homeowner. That's my idea. I'm Sarah Hunter. And me and my partner, Chandra, have lived, have owned the home and lived in the neighborhood for four years now, I think.
Three and a half.
Three and a half. So we have a three-year-old son, his name is Soren. He is at our house right now, being watched by his grandmother. Prior to having Soren, Chandra's mom, Ramona, lived in California, and we almost never saw her. Once Soren was born, she really wanted to be more involved because he's her only grandson. Soren also has autism, which is a developmental disability. That means that he needs a little bit more care than, than other kids might, especially as he gets older. So one of the things that I'm always thinking about, in my day job, I work for the Department of Developmental Services, one of the things that I'm always thinking about is, what is Soren going to do when he gets older and needs some more support, but, but we're driving each other crazy at home. So one of the things that we had been talking to Chandra's mom about was, first of all, that we, we really need help with childcare, with kind of daily, like, kind of the daily things that come up with having a kid with special needs. And so we were hoping that she'd be able to move in with us and help to provide some of that. Our house is too small for all of us to live comfortably that way for the long term, so we have been talking about an accessory apartment with her for a while. But the other thing is that we wanted to make sure that we had an option for our son when he became an adult. So when we get to the point where Ramona is no longer in need of the home, we would hope that it would be an option for him, possibly to live more independently, still receiving support from his parents, still receiving support from whatever staff we end up hiring to work with him. And he's three, so I don't know what he's actually going to need in the future, and probably we'll get to the point where he's 18 and he'll be like, what, what were you thinking? I was going to live in your backyard forever? But it's really nice to have the option, and I work with adults with autism now, and I see what, what the options are like now, and they're very grim. So I'm trying to look forward to kind of create a better, a better solution for our family. Additionally, like putting a one bed, so Ramona ended up moving to East Hampton, and she lives downtown now, and so I'd also like to put an affordable one-bedroom apartment back on the market in East Hampton, considering that affordable housing is so hard to find in the city and in most communities in the area. So that was kind of the other thing that we were thinking, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just, that's kind of like the background of it. That's kind of how we came to it.
All right. All right. So at this point, we will open up for a public comment, question. I will ask that you do state your name, that you address your questions or concerns to the board, and that we try to have some civil discourse. So, oh.
Just want to make sure that everyone has signed in. If you haven't-
Please do so.
Thank you.
All right. So, you're the first contestant? Yes, sir.
Yes, my, excuse me, my name is Mark Abara. I live by 8 Grove Street.
Yeah.
And I'm going to give you, give the board a little letter that I would like to add up. I don't want to go through and be here for another hour either, so I'm going to try to summarize what I, my comments and questions and so on. Section 8.5.2, there's like five sections for the purpose of this accessory apartment, and again, I think they're rather vague. There's things like inexpensive rental units, affordable housing. I mean, what is an affordable housing? If I make $200,000 a year and I want to buy a half a million dollar house, is it affordable to me?
Now-
What's an inexpensive, I know I'm exaggerating a little bit, but what is an inexpensive rental unit? Those kind, I just think it's rather vague as far as determining if you qualify for those. Okay? The, excuse me, of course, we want to look at the property values in the neighborhood and the character. I know they've tried to address that, but the bottom line is too, you're putting in a 526-square-foot unit, and I think my house is probably one of the smaller ones on Grove Street, and that's about just a little over 1,000 without the garage. Okay? So you're sticking in something about half the size and surrounded by houses that are at least 1,000 square feet, and you also have garages attached to them, and this will have no garage. So it's cosmetically, I know they're trying to be a good neighbor and I appreciate that, but I don't see how you can get there with that. Again, I talked about the size. If you could address what dual frontage is, if it's, if you have a lot that does have access from both sides, are both sides considered dual frontage, or you have to have a backyard? I mean, the front yard I know is on Mayer Street.
Can I?
Maybe you can address that.
Yeah, the, the way that the zoning ordinance sort of looks at whether or not you have a front yard, a side yard, and a rear yard, is that looks at whether or not the lot fronts on one street, or two streets, or three streets. So if you have what's considered a full lot, where you have frontage on two streets, you have two front yards and two side yards, and there is no rear yard as defined by the zoning ordinance. So even though their residence is on, the, the street address is on Mayer Street, and it might feel like there is a backyard, according to zoning, there is no rear yard with regards to setbacks.
Okay.
So that's in, in the zoning-
So it goes straight through, but it's considered both of them are fall, both, both spaces that sit on a street, or any side of a lot that sits on a street, it's considered the front line. So if you lived on a corner, they're both considered the front. So that's the zoning setbacks and things along those lines.
Okay. I'm still not clear on all this parking stuff that was in the application. It's mentioning about five, getting five cars and on the, if I, unless I'm looking at the picture of the house, it looks like there's two driveways on the picture I have. And then I also, in, in the application, it looks like there's additional pit spot or something to qualify for the two spaces for dwelling. Is one of them being put on Mayer Street? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
So they're, they're putting in the one on Mayer Street to qualify for the-
No, there's a room on Mayer, on the Mayer Street side?
Yeah.
There's, there's two parking spaces, and then we have the garage, so that's three spaces. And then that we already have.
Yeah.
We're only talking about adding one.
We're adding one more.
That's my understanding.
Okay, but that's going to be located on Mayer Street that-
On Grove. The one additional is on Grove to prevent parking on the street.
So in essence, it's never going to be used, because if you put the house at the back of Grove Street, they're not going to park on that space, on, a space on Mayer Street and walk all the way through the backyard. It's more form over substance, I think.
It is, it is, it is basically, it is meeting the requirements of the code-
Yeah.
-as it is written.
Yeah, but it's really, it's just meeting the code and it's-
Well, if the, if this was not a through lot, and it was a standard lot, then all the parking would be on Grove Street, or on, on Mayer Street. Okay? This is an effort to give some independence to the person who's living in this house because of the way the house is, the lot is configured.
Okay. I also, talking about the property, you have a space to the left of their house, a garage, sizable space, I think it's 74 by 36, and then you have the whole backyard. And I, I, again, I'm not disputing their reason to have to build this, or building, but I think the location or the placement of the building is more to the detriment of the Grove Street people than it is the homeowners. There's plenty of room with the backyard and the side space that I don't know if you have. Consider another placement of this or another design of the building.
Can I speak to that? We did consider that.
Can I finish, please?
I'm subway, of course.
Everything gets addressed on the board, please.
So with that, with the lot configuration the way it is, you know, I'm wondering if there is other alternatives so that they can get their dwelling, but at the same time the Grove people, Grove Street people have a better cosmetic look to the neighborhood, again, because of the size of this building and so on. And some of the wording in the application, it just seems like we don't want, it's, I perceive it to be that we don't want to ruin our backyard and we have a son that wants to run around in the backyard, but you have, if they, if they put the dwelling into their app, their application, there'd be approximately 60 feet between the dwelling on Grove Street all the way to the back, the back of their house on Mayer Street.
If I could just say that the, the decision of where they would like to put it, I think is their decision, but it, it's more, our job is more to dictate, is more to decide whether or not it meets the requirements as set forth towards, in the zoning ordinance.
Yes, I understand that.
So, and I am not going to sit here and dispute whether, whether they should move it six feet towards their house or sort of in their side yard or whatever like that. That is more of a decision of the homeowner, but I understand your, your-
But it's also your, your authority to make sure the Grove Street property is cosmetically good and matches the neighborhood as best as it can.
Yep. I could make a comment on the positioning, too. So where we positioned it in the back of this yard, it's directly across from someone's garage, so it's not a direct sightline from someone's windows across the street, and that was part of the decision-making and the location of this.
Yes, ma'am.
Additionally, we didn't want to position, if we go further back into the yard, the conversation came up, well, we could flip the nice side to look, so when they're looking out of the back of their house, they could be looking at the, the nice-looking side of this new, this new accessory apartment, leaving Grove Street with the uglier rear, and we didn't want to do that to Grove Street because that, that would have potentially a negative effect, whereas a new house in what looks like what could be a single-family lot is very unlikely to have a negative effect on values of any houses around it. So we, we thought through those, and we did think about putting it in the sidewalk of Mayer Street as well, but it would have caused us to create something that looked, was not in the, it did not fit with the character of the neighborhood, because it would have been tall or skinny or too long. It, it just wasn't the rights, it wouldn't work because of the setback requirements.
Okay. If I could ask, have you constructed other units in a similar configuration where the house, the accessory unit is, has frontage on another street? And has there been a difference, change in local property values as regard, as regard to that?
So I can't talk specifically to the data. I don't know of specific examples of something like this happening and what the impact has been. If we look around East Hampton, though, any infill construction projects, whether it's a duplex or a row of condos, there are some, I believe on the, I think Mount Tom Av, there was something put in there, and then, bling on the street names, but I think the example that you see is when infill happens, it tends to start blending into the neighborhood after a few years, especially after landscaping is put in.
And the accessory apartment is 526 square feet. I know in the neighborhoods off of Holyoke Street, there are quite a few houses that are less than 800 square feet. I mean, that's the standard in that part of town. They're a single family and they're small houses. They're not quite this small, but there are quite a few that are- They're not quite this small, but there are quite a few that are in the seven hundred square feet category.
Correct, yep.
On Hoyoke Street?
In those neighborhoods off of Hoyoke Street.
Really?
I, I also think it's a thing that we're trying to keep in mind with the size, is not only just setbacks, as we go up in square footage, the price goes up. And then we start pushing in further and further into, with his question regards to what is affordable housing. We go up from one ten, one twenty, one thirty, one fifty, one sixty. Every time we add square footage, that goes up, and then that dream of creating something that is affordable for a homeowner like these folks that are trying to fit juniors, their home care for their, their child, and, and, um, getting, you know, their, their mother, or mother-in-law to live on the property with them. If we keep pushing the square footage up, it's not gonna be an affordable way to do that.
And beyond the affordability of construction, East Hampton has an issue with diversity of housing stock, especially when it comes to these small accessible one bedrooms. Um, so this doesn't necessarily need to be more than five hundred and fifty square feet as it relates to who's probably gonna end up living this now and thirty years from now.
I'm sorry, can I say, are you sure? Are you sure? What happens if something happens?
Can you state your name for the record?
Laura McGuire, I live at ten Grove Street. What happens if you two split up?
I mean, we're married.
Heaven forbid. No, it happens.
So we still-
And then, but then you're gonna sell it.
Yeah, it changes the board that comes-
You need to address the board.
And then you're gonna sell it, and then what are we gonna do? Are you gonna put up a garage, seeing you have enough square footage on the left side of that house, where the driveway is going on the right side of the house, which is probably six feet away from the neighbor's driveway? I just don't understand, and I pull up my shade, and I'm looking at the house. That's what I'm saying. I just, things happen, and I'm stating my opinion that what happens if some, you, they should sell the house, so, so what's gonna happen? Are they gonna rent it, or are you gonna? I just, I don't, I don't agree with it. I'm just gonna say that.
Well, I, and, and I understand, and that's why we give everybody a chance to speak.
It should be set back even further.
I could talk to the rules associated with selling the house, if you'd like. Um, so if they were to sell the house, uh, they will need to, the new homeowner would own both units, the primary and the new detached structure, and they would have to renew their special permit with the board. Um, and the same rules would apply. It would have to be rented out to someone approved by the homeowner. They would have, and the new owner would have to be owner-occupying one of the two. Um, so this would never be a, a separate detached home that would get continued building on top. Any new structures on top of this would have to come back here and meet the requirement. Um, again, that would be a, uh, an additional thing that is not currently required by the zoning.
What about a deck?
Again, it would have to come back to the, to the board to put that on, and it would have to meet building code.
What about switching the driveway to the left side instead of the right?
Um, I, it, it seems irrelevant to the, to the application whether it's on the right or the left.
You'd have to go-
There's more space on the left than there is on the right.
Um, I asked the resident of the living Grove Street, and they have something to say about that, so I'm just getting in.
Okay, okay, okay. But we're, we're gonna get, we will, we will work our way through.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you're, are you saying that you're, you know, you don't, you're rebel, irrelevant which side of, of the house that the-
We don't have a preference on which side it is on.
On which side driveway.
No, but, but I would say-
Excuse me, excuse me.
I, I would say if we move the driveway to the other side of the house, we're gonna be butting the other neighbor. Um, so the driveway, and we don't want the driveway directly in front of the property, 'cause that is not the typical way that the driveways are put. We'd want it on the side so you can see the, the front of the house.
Well, it could go on the left side.
Okay, okay. We're trying to be civil here, please. Okay, all right, so.
I, 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 I never finished what I-
Well, I, and I would like to give everybody a chance to speak here, sir.
It's all right.
Well, you gave us a letter, and we will, we are gonna read the letter, 'cause, you know, we're thirty-four minutes in here, and, and I don't see us probably getting through this all tonight, but we'll-
Well, if I can just one last quick question, 'cause it was brought up by, uh, I'm sorry, we're gonna get into this there, but the thirty twenty, thirty twenty-five, twenty-five-
Yes.
Now, if, uh, the drive, does that include the driveway, or it has to, 'cause you mentioned about from the house, it had to be thirty-
It's the structure.
All right.
The structure has to be, if you, if you think about the, the property lines, okay, on the sides, you have to be back twenty-five feet, on the roadside, you have to be back thirty feet.
And the sides are what?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So the house is about forty.
Yep, and the lot is a hundred.
Right, so you have forty, but I was wondering if the driveway included that twenty-five?
The driveway is not included.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, please state your name and-
So, my name is, uh, Enrique Suarez, I'm a new neighbor to the, to East Hampton. So I am the owner, or we are the owners of the living Grove Street, uh, so this concerns us directly.
Sure.
Um, so we do have a list of concerns that we would like to sort of like talk about, and then maybe get responses, okay? So one concern that we have is regarding the square footage and the footprint of this new space. In the application, there were about four different numbers about the square, the square footage of the dwelling, of the primary dwelling, right? So we have eighteen forty-four square feet, fourteen sixteen thirty, eighteen seventy-five square feet, nineteen eighty-six square feet, right? These all, and that table that has sort of like yellow and the, the blue and the yellow.
Mm-hmm.
And this is important, because it states that, uh, ADU should not be more than a third of the footprint of the, of the primary dwelling, but depending on which number you go off of, then you get closer to forty percent of the dwelling, or you get closer to twenty-five percent of the primary dwelling. So I guess that one question that I would like to hear from the board is, when we compare the living area to the affected area, I see that the first floor and the attic, you know, are accounted for, but then we start getting into sort of like the garage being accounted for, the porch being accounted for, the patio being accounted for, the unfinished basement accounted for, and that kind of like bumps up the footprint. That gets us closer to that thirty-three percent that you need to leave, right? So that's question number one. Question number two, um, I think that the, you know, so like it has been addressed that, um, the building code, eight five two, it's required that the building is situated about fifteen feet from our floor. But as you pointed out, the driveway is not included in that, and because it's a residential driveway, it needs to be about fifteen feet in width, right? So then, even if we move it to twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, that is still like bumping up against our driveway, because our driveway and our garage are against our law.
Mm-hmm.
So we do have concerns about that. And I just wanna point out that the, the developer's website under privacy and curb appeal, they said, nobody wants to sacrifice their privacy or curb appeal to get a backyard rental. We evaluate your land to determine where the apartment should be located to minimize the impact on your privacy and maintain your home's curb appeal, right? So then, the homeowner's curb appeal and privacy is being maintained. However, we, the next-door neighbors, como, uh, home, you know, privacy and curb appeal may not be maintained, even if we go with twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty, that's point number two. Point number three, in terms of changing the character of the neighborhood, um, you know, think that, that they have gone to great lengths, great lengths to think about how it may fit and how it doesn't fit, um, with sort of like the existing properties, uh, but we still have some concerns, right? So like one, for example, is that, and according to the developer's website, is, they have a question, what about cable, internet, and mail? And their answer is backyard ADU will establish separate cable and mailing address for the ADU. So I understand that this is a through lot, which is very special in East Hampton. We don't have a lot of, I mean, at least from what I can bear as a neighborhood. We don't have a lot of through lots in the area, so I think that a lot of the policies and requirements and the specifications that are being drawn up may not take into account the fact that we are a special case. However, I think that the composition of the neighborhood is being changed by the mere fact of establishing a new residence there, right? Like I understand that sewer and water and electricity are connected to the main dwelling, but for all intents and purposes, for all the services, this is a, this is a Grove Street house. This is not a Mayor house. This is a Grove Street house.
Mm-hmm.
And I appreciate that they're trying to keep the parking off of our street, or Grove Street, because it, I mean, I had to pay extra to get our, our, our furniture delivered, because the semi could not fit because of how narrow the street was, right?
Mm-hmm.
So this is already a narrow street, so I appreciate that. However, again, this is a significant change to the composition of the neighborhood that I would like to sort of like have addressed. And then eventually, I think that, um, or sort of point number four, in terms of the concerns of this becoming a rental property, right? Like I, I, I understand the rationale, as an educator myself, who works in elementary school, with, you know, children from all walks of life, and with all backgrounds, especially uneducated, special needs, I understand the need to have parental care constantly, like, I get that. I think that, um, as Laura pointed out, one concern that we have is like what's gonna happen later. You know, hopefully, this is a situation where it, it works out, and families stay together, and, you know, hopefully, Soren doesn't need to be there, uh, but even if he does, you know, that's great. But what if plans change, and then this becomes an income, income property? You know, in fact, the developer companies, they, they market themselves as a rental income property primarily. So, um, right, so, so I think that for us, especially with short-term income rental, like, you know, we live in Seattle, we live in Denver, we have seen the way that things have gone with Airbnb, with renter by owner. So I just, I am, I, I am sympathetic to the, the low stock of housing, of affordable housing, but we don't live in Boston, right? We don't live in New York City. So I think, I, I, I don't know, I, I think that it may be a need that is not quite there, and then you'll think, even if it is, I'm just concerned about like what that impact of having someone rotating in and out might be from our current, our neighbors, or whoever lives there next. And, um, and I, and again, like, you know, I think you asked, you asked the company for evidence of their experience in developing these kinds of structure, structures and through lots, and the company, as far as I'm concerned, did not provide evidence to answer your question. They said, I don't have, I, nothing comes to mind. So it seems to me like this is an experienced company that is being brought to do a project that is incredibly complicated, and I'm not sure that the expertise is there to do this in a way that, um, is gonna be satisfactory for, for the increase. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a pretty big one. And I should say, by the way, like, I am sympathetic to Asian parents. I myself have Asian parents in states different than ours. Like, I, I want this work out for the family, I really do. There's a hundred and sixty-four square foot basement. Maybe a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars could get us places, but that's just my interpretation.
Can I speak to the basement thing? Could we go look into that?
Well, let's, we're, we'd like to address the, okay, go ahead.
So, um, I think the reason for the, the various numbers, um, if you look at the, the ordinance, it says, uh, in addition to the original building is permitted, provided that the addition does not increase the floor area or volume of the original building by more than one-third, thirty-three percent. Uh, excluding unfinished attic, basement, garage, porch, and patio. Um, and this also applies to an accessory apartment constructed as part of a new detached dwelling.
Right.
Um, so the highlighted areas, the non-highlighted areas here, porch, garage, patio, unfinished basement, I think are excluded from this, uh, total, uh, area, is that correct?
Correct, yep. Yeah, we are going by the ordinance to only include the, the things that count based on how it's written.
Okay, um, by way of, you know, the short-term rental, um, you know, in rendering a decision, um, on this application, we can put, um, certain criteria on that in that it would not be for short-term rental, it would not, could not be used for Airbnb, things along those lines. So those are things that we can put in as stipulations of a decision, you know, once, if we get to that point. So, that's, that's something along those lines. Are there other people that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Steph Gardner, I live at twenty-three Grove Street. By the way, it's taken me three and a half years, welcome to the neighborhood, welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
My concern is this, there's already blacktop on Grove Street that I assume would be for a driveway eventually for somebody. Also, that's in the middle of the property.
Okay.
Okay, on that side. The other thing is, what leaves the town have for requirements for tiny homes? Tiny houses. Because to me, that house is a tiny house, and the rest of Grove Street is not. I'm sorry, I, it, it just doesn't fit.
Yeah, I, do we even have it?
I can-
Go ahead, you can, you can address that one, Jamie.
Okay, so, um, the, as long as the structure meets the state's building codes, they are allowed by the building in East Hampton, so-
So in other words, I could put one on my property, that's-
Um, so if you have a single-family home, um, and you can have an accessory apartment, it has to be, according to the state's building code, you need two hundred square feet of living area per person. So if you, the smallest structure that could be considered living in a livable, uh, residential unit would be two hundred square feet. Um, you could build that as an accessory apartment. It has to have, um, connections to water, sewer, has to be on a permanent foundation. Um, so a lot of the tiny homes are really, um, people want them on, uh, something on wheels, so they can move it around.
Not necessarily, no.
And that, but that is, that is the, that is, if you wanted it on wheels, you would not be able to, to get it in East Hampton. But if it's on a permanent foundation and it's connected to utilities, then the minimum size is two hundred square feet per person.
Okay, well, I understand your dilemma, because I have friends that have autistic kids. But I really wish they would've looked for another alternative, would maybe attached it to their home. Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to the concerns of eleven Grove?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Um, oh, 'cause I think what you said from eleven Grove Street had a lot of merit. I just wanted to respond to a few. Um, so I either respond to what you'd said about the privacy. Um, obviously, the website's referring to, um, to our client, the homeowners. Um, but that is a concern to us, and it was brought up when we were talking to Jeff Bag, Bag. Um, and we did wanna con, have a conversation with you. There was nothing specifically in the plan about dividing between the two driveways. Uh, driveways don't have a setback requirement in East Hampton. Um, but we do understand that there could be issues with headlights. Um, but we were also aware that there was going to be conversation about, is it twenty-five feet? Is the actual long twenty-five feet, or is it fifteen, which would pull the driveway further over? Um, but we were happy to talk to you about, do we want some shrubs in between those two? A short five-foot fence to provide a little blocker, if, of course, we are right up against it. Um, but it sounds like at least one of the contingencies will be moving this further away from your property towards the middle of this lot. Um, and the other thing, uh, you brought up evidence of our expertise in this. Um, I was specifically referring to, I can't comment on what this is going to do on home values, because there is no studies on that. Um, so there's nobody in this room can, that can make a comment on that. There is only testimonial evidence of projects that have done infill in East Hampton, and they have not had an effect. We've seen home values that can continue to rise as infill occurs. Um, we have plenty of expertise in doing construction. Uh, my business partner is a general contractor, and he's been building houses for the past fifteen years. Um, so we have more than enough expertise to do this. Um, the, the comment was specifically on home values. I, I cannot say whether one way or the other. But I would urge you, if, if you did wanna go and reach out to real estate agents and see what they have to say.
The comment I wanted to make on that as well, as far as whether or not this would ever be used as a rental, and as you had spoke to, that could be actually a contingency that it would not be, 'cause the homeowner has to live there. A regular home could be rented at any time, and the homeowner doesn't have to live there. So in some respects, I find it almost a safer bet, because if, if you get a divorce, or, you know, as we're speaking with this homeowners, a few comments have been made, well, marriages don't necessarily last forever. What if you get a divorce, then what happens with the home? Based on these guidelines, this has to go back in front of the zoning board to, if the house sells, and, and what, if they were gonna change the use of it, it's much less likely that that's ever gonna become a rental unit than a regular house would be. You see, regular houses go up for rent all the time.
Mm-hmm. Does that answer some of the current concerns you had, especially with the, uh, the space between?
Um, may I?
You may.
Thank you. Um, I don't know, maybe.
Okay.
Um, I, I guess I'll, I'll just wait to see sort of like what the board decides in terms of, like, which-
Okay, yeah, it is not our intent to go right up against that without providing a buffer, but we, we knew that there was going to be conversation about the setbacks specifically. Um, and we know that you would probably have a preference on fence, or shrubs, or whatever it might be if it's needed.
From the neighborly perspective, we've lived in that house since early August, and it's surprising to me that it's taken almost three months to have that conversation.
So this is-
Oh, I, I guess that's, I guess that's a thing that, you know, I, I would say, so-
So as a point, we've only been working on this for-
A month.
A month. It has not been very long. Right.
We've been living there. So, um, okay.
All right. Is there anyone else that has questions, concerns?
Yeah, um, so, I've been here about ten years.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Name, your name and address.
What, or, I'm only, I'm at fourteen Grove Street. So I looked at a lot of houses when I was looking years ago, and I lived in those neighborhoods where it was more condensed. And after twenty years of renting and living in those neighborhoods, I came down Grove Street and I went, oh, everybody has a big lot, there's some space in between. So that's what I thought I was getting, you know, versus three blocks over where it's a little more, you know, they have apartments and they have rentals and, you know, coming and going. So now they want to put a house that's not a house. And...
It, it does meet the requirements of being a structure.
Well, whatever, whatever you think. And, uh, I'm concerned that she has a visitor and it's snowing out. Where's the visitor gonna park? You know, and the street in the winter is one lane, you know. It's one lane in the wintertime. So it's a challenge, but, uh, I, I don't, I mean, I have a big lot. I could put a couple apartments on there. I mean, the way you guys are talking, and sell my house and then rent, rent the whole thing. So that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, oh, okay, this is gonna be a rental neighborhood, and I can put in such three apartments. I can build my garage and put something there. I mean, the bottom line is, they are having, they're building a whole building in their backyard, so, and I'm having a problem with that. Well, that's what I wanted to say.
So I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question that, that I, I don't know if people will really see kind of where I'm going with this. But, yeah, it's just a question. I'm not, I, I'm purely questioning. If this didn't, lot did not go through to a back, to another street, if it had someone's property, if their property was large enough that they could put the same scenario and it was backed up to another set of property, would you be concerned? It's the fact that it puts up against Grove Street. That seems to be the challenge.
Well, and the fact that it's, to me, it's a rental. It's an accessory apartment.
It's an accessory apartment, and...
But, I mean, are you gonna make the next people tear it down?
The zoning law, no, because the zoning law does allow by...
Right, right, so you're saying...
To have an accessory apartment, okay? If they wanted to put an apartment above their garage and rent it to somebody, you can.
Then much more sense.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm merely just kind of putting ideas out there. But I'm, so the, the concern or, or issue is the frontage on Grove Street seems to be the main.
But I have a comment. I mean, their, their frontage, the applicant's frontage on Grove Street is a hundred feet. That's a lot of frontage.
It is.
And their lot is point four-three acres, and I looked at the, um, tax map online this afternoon. And if you're looking at this map here, the lot next to it is point one-eight acres. The applicants have a very large lot for this neighborhood. And everyone's talking like they're crowding us out. Well, the other neighbors, if you look at the tax map, are much more crowded. I mean, the lots are much small, there, there's a lot more building coverage in the neighborhood than what this lot has. But I put, so it's, I think it's somewhat disingenuous to complain about the crowding, because this lot's a big lot. And, and there are a lot of houses...
I disagree. My neighbors have a huge lot. I have a...
And there are a lot of, and, and I'm very familiar with these neighborhoods, I walk them all the time. And there are a lot of houses that are less than eight hundred square feet. My next-door neighbor and the person across the street from me both have houses that are under eight hundred square feet.
But that's not on Grove Street.
Then I'll sell it and rent out.
It's on Summit Avenue, which has bigger lots than Grove Street.
Okay.
Can I make one comment about, just in response to the garage statement, building above the garage? Part of our concern and why we are proposing this as a solution, if we were, as a construction company, coming in and gonna build something above the garage, that is gonna be far more, I mean, now we're talking about Mayor Street rather than Grove, but that's gonna be far more invasive for a construction company to come in and be on-site for weeks at a time with trucks and trying, and trying to get that garage to where it needs to be. And, and be, it, the presence of a construction company is gonna be in your neighborhood a lot longer than it would be for us to come in and put this unit in, in a much more clean fashion.
I, I think the concern is from the neighbors is less the duration of time that you're on-site. It's the duration of time that the home will be...
Yes, I mean, that is not our problem.
I think that one thing that I, it's just not an affordable option for us. It also costs a lot more to build on.
I didn't want to...
If, if anyone's...
I'd just say, kind of go off what you were saying. Uh, this is a big lot, and based on the zoning, it could hold two units outright. So there is, this could be converted to a duplex, two-family lot as well, to increase density. And then there would not be the requirement, um, for them to be owner-occupied, and this could be owned by an investor who doesn't live in East Hampton. Um, and it is in their right to do that. Um, and again, when we were talking to them, that did come up. Uh, so their, their lot is big enough to convert it to a two-family lot, and that would eliminate their need to owner-occupy this. And it does create the scenario where now an investor who doesn't even live in East Hampton could own this. And now you're not getting home, a homeowner's oversight into who's occupying this building. Um, you're not getting that piece of regulation. And one thing I can say from the data is when you have a two-family home that's owner-occupied, you have a better tenant. You have a, it's better for the neighborhood. The rents are lower even without rent restrictions. Um, so this, this piece of how it's being done is better for East Hampton as a whole. It may add another home to Grove Street, but at the end of the day, this is a huge lot. And the, the lot that, where we're putting it is almost a single-family lot on its own. It's just shy of that. Um, so what we're proposing is the, the best option for the community, rather than doing a full-out two-family conversion.
Okay. I, I don't wanna, I don't like doing this, but we, we did commit to an hour. All right, you have, you have, we'll watch the clock on when we started the videotape, so...
So this is apples and oranges. I don't think that comparing the size of the lots or the neighborhood is fair, because again, this is a crew lot, which is very special in, 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 in East Hampton. As you said, I've seen, I've seen big, big, big lots on the state, on East Street that have the ADU in the back, and they look great.
Right.
This not, that's not our neighborhood.
I understand that, and that's why I wanted to put that out there, is to, to find out what was the concern.
The vague threat of this could be worse, I don't appreciate.
Okay.
I don't think that's fair.
All right.
I, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's neighborly.
Um, it's more, it's more to point out the size of the lot.
Okay, okay, please. All right. So we still have to deliberate, we still have things, decisions we need to make, and, and a decision to make this official, one way or another. We haven't even had a chance to discuss it among ourselves. So at this point, we are going to, um, what is the, the magic word there?
Continue.
Continue the application.
To a specific time and date and location.
Okay, so, when is our next...
On November twentieth is the next scheduled CBA meeting at six P M. in this room. So that's the date and time and location we want to continue to.
Let's take a look here, 'cause we're starting to get into that fun season.
Yeah, it'd be tricky today.
Yeah.
It's, it's the week before Thanksgiving.
It is the week before Thanksgiving. All right. So we will continue it to November twentieth at six P M., and we will have it be the first item on the agenda for that meeting. Okay, and at that point, we will have a chance, if anybody has any other questions or concerns, we will open back it up to public speak, 'cause we have not closed public speak at that time. And we will go ahead and then hopefully conclude what the application is before us.
Do you want to ask the applicants to resubmit a site plan showing the different...
Yes, I would, thank you.
And/or a landscaping plan or landscaping plan, but any, any of the comments?
Yeah, so we need the new, the twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-foot front yard setback. A couple options on driveway location and a landscape plan, please.
Okay.
Okay?
I do have one question. Is there any way we can, is there precedent to do a meeting before the next official sit down at this to discuss this, open items?
Um, we can only do it in a public forum.
Okay.
Our meeting has to be a public meeting.
Okay, so there is, is the next, the next meeting?
Correct, correct.
And I have one question. You said you have to discuss it. Will that be done publicly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, everything you, everything we do is done in public. We have no closed-door meetings.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Well, I thank you all that came, uh, in conjunction with this hearing. We do have another one, so if you could kindly leave quietly, and we hope to hear from you.
Or you're, or you're invited to stay.
Or you can stay!
You're gonna discuss dogs and horses?
Is that for him to sign in?
It sounds less available.
It is, it should still be available. Jamie, the sign-in sheet?
If you didn't, if you didn't sign in, please do so.
Oh, Laura, I'll be there.
Laura, thank you.
They got a meeting.
I just wanted five minutes.
I'll give you five minutes, okay?
I have a comment, but I'll be...
No, I'll be home. I'll be home.
Laura.
I, I, well, I'll wait. Let's, let's, let's get through to our next one. Jamie asked me which one I wanted to do first. I said, let's, let's, these first, let's go.
Hi.
How are we doing? Okay. Our next application is, let's get to the right page here. Uh, Christine, Christine Pratt, Wagging Tails Animal Services of eleven thirty-one Federal Street in Belchertown is seeking a special permit for the operation of a commercial horse stable and dog daycare, boarding, training, grooming, and related ancillary activities in accordance with Table five dash one of agricultural uses number six and section twelve point seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. Subject property is located at thirty Florence Road in split-zone residential suburban and residential rural.
Yes, sir.
Would you be Christine Pratt?
I would be Christine Pratt.
All right. Well, let's hear what you have to say.
So I currently own Wagging Tails Pet Resort in Hadley.
Okay.
And there is a great need for this business, and I kind of known Donnie for years.
Great.
And we were talking about it, and he said, we're selling the horse farm. And I started to think about it, and I was thinking that would be a great expansion on what we're already doing. We want to keep the horses there, and we want to add dogs. We are running a very successful, very customer-transparent business. It's clean, it's neat, it's organized, it runs like a well-oiled machine. It is a business, but our number-one priority is to our pets, to the dogs. That would transfer over to the horses as well. Um, I tell all my employees, dogs are number one, cleaning is number two, and the customers are number three. I truly believe that. So looking at places to do this, the city of East Hampton seems like a great place to expand to.
Okay.
It is on the other side of the bridge. I have customers who live in East Hampton. They live in West Hampton, North Hampton. Fighting that bridge, we all know it, we've all done it.
Yep.
So East Hampton just makes the most sense for us to expand.
Okay. All right. So you're, I mean, you, you've pretty much laid it all out here on what you want to do.
I tried.
What's that?
I tried.
So what is, is there anything?
We are not planning any changes to any of the buildings or structures except to retrofit the stalls in the first barn, which is part of the arena. And when I say retrofit, we're going to put FRP walls inside so the dogs can't get hurt on the wood that's in there.
Okay.
Other than that, the building is almost perfectly suited to become a dog daycare and boarding facility. And also, we do a lot of training. I have my director of training here with me, and my manager is also here with me. If you guys have questions about that kind of stuff...
I have a question, a dumb question. There was, you gave us so much information about dog urine. And, and I'm sorry, but I think horses pee a lot more than dogs.
I agree with you.
So why are we worried about dog urine? I understand dog poop. You want to clean up.
We are not worried about dog urine, and that's kind of why I put that in there, because that was a question that did come up in Hadley about, because in Hadley, we're in the aquifer.
Right.
Um, so it does not, by the time it gets where it's going, it is so dissipated, it just doesn't matter anymore. So that was not a dumb question.
Where's the overlay?
It's why I included it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for the directing guy.
I've seen a horse and a dog in this.
Me too! Dog is much worse. I mean, horse is much worse.
Yeah, more boggling.
A lot more.
Okay.
And what kind of soundproofing, if any, will be in the boarding, the overnight? Is there any?
We are planning on putting insulation in the arena, um, which, and there is insulation right now in the, in the stable area.
And there's a ten-foot ceiling with a hay loft over it, which in turn keeps the sound down.
Okay. Tony?
I thought you had your hand up.
I didn't know if anybody had any, uh, comments at all.
Question. Jamie's comment, she commented on apartment plan, and I drove through there this afternoon. And where do the cars park? I mean, is there any organized...
At this time, there is no organized parking. When I made the offer on this property, I was told there were twenty-one parking spaces. Donnie, would you like to comment on that?
Okay, the reason there's no organized parking is 'cause we ride all over that yard. We have a very rutted, holy driveway, so people don't come zipping down and spook a horse and, you know, I mean, do we want them to come in slow and pull off to the side? But the area between my mom, the house, with my mom's house, to the barn, we have parked as many as forty trail, horses. I mean, I'm sorry, pickups with two-horse trailers. You know, if, if you do it correctly, and we, we never had pavement really, because it's, you don't really want horses. If a horse does get loose and slips and falls, you're gonna have problems. Where shod horses will get a hold of dirt, they'll skate over pavement. But there's a, there's a hundred by two-hundred outdoor riding arena that could be converted to parking. In fact, we use it for horse shows and for auctions at, at this point, uh, that if you're looking directly at the barn, it's to the left.
So speaking to Hadley, I can tell you that we have, I think, twenty-five parking spaces right now. And the only time our parking spaces are ever full is when I have an employee mandatory meeting. Because our customers stand in and out all day long.
What time do you open for daycare?
So in Hadley, right now, we open at six-thirty A M. and we close at seven P M. And the boarding facility is, there will be somebody there twenty-four hours a day. So the dogs are never, and the horses even, are never left alone.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say concerning this application?
So I had a brief discussion this afternoon with the assessor. And while not directly related to the zoning board and the use, currently the property is, um, in a tax reduction program called, uh, Chapter sixty-one A. And, um, under Chapter sixty-one A, um, dog kennels and the related activities will not be considered an agricultural use. And so she was saying that some of those here, if you have a, the large dog run, that might have to be taken out of the sixty-one A program. Um, and that there could be a tax implication, um, for that process. And that you should probably have a conversation with her, um, just to figure out what that, uh, tax liability could be, and if there is ways that, you know, it's not, you know, if you're using it for both horses and dogs, then it's different than if it's only being used for, um, the dogs and then...
Right, we're definitely keeping the horses.
Right, so it's gonna be, that's why you would need to talk to her
Okay.
to figure out what that, that, that tax liability or tax implications could be.
Okay.
And then, um... And then, um...
Will you be using the house?
The house, my plan for the house at this point, um, there's a tenant in there right now.
Oh, so it's, okay, so it's rented.
It is rented at the moment.
And it's larger than eight hundred square feet.
And it has a finished basement.
It does too, yeah.
It does.
Okay.
You asked about any other comments, I'm dug grouper, it's our place. We all, our family thinks it's a great way to keep the place open
Sure.
And have horses and not have more houses.
Yep.
It's paying an ass to move an house.
Get the kid out of the barn, get the barn out of the kid.
We're hoping that it's, that there's no hiccups because the use, it, it lends itself really well.
Just to add on that, we've been there forty-seven years, we've watched this town go up and go down and go back up again. And we're, we're proud of what's happened and we wanna see it stay open. When I was a kid, there were fifteen dairies in this town. Pretty much is just some horses left and we want, I mean, listen, we don't have any say over it. If later a community come in and buy whatever, but if you've worked as hard as we've worked there, we'd really like to see it stay the way it is. But, but that's a personal preference that has nothing to do with, you know, anything else.
And I can also say that we don't need a thirty-acre farm. But I love this thirty-acre farm, I think it will, the possibilities that we can do with the horses and the dogs and it's just, there's so much that we can do there to keep it for animals.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Um, just to, sorry.
No.
I wanna point out that there were some conversations with the, from Conservation Commission and, uh, City Clerk about it, some comments as well.
You might need a wetlands permit for the fence around the
Correct, so the four-and-a-half acre fence out back is already there. So we're only using a fence that already exists.
Oh, so this leached-in area?
Yes.
It's already, it's already fenced off, you're just marking it as?
I just wanted to let you know where we were putting it, but the fence is there.
Well, you should just tell the Conservation Officer that.
I actually did, uh, I came in to pay the, um, check for the advertising and she was in your office. And I said that to her and she said, oh, well then I don't see the problem.
I think there was
She didn't know there was a fence there.
Yeah, because it wasn't clear in the application.
Right, my fault.
So
I, I don't do this for
But, but I think that the bigger issue is that there are a lot of wetlands in the back there. And so if there were any future construction-related activities that they would need to both come back to the zoning board of appeals for, to amend that site plan and then also to at least go through the Conservation Commission for some sort of determination as to whether or not, or construction activities are going to negatively impact the wetlands.
And I do understand that, as I said, in Hadley, we have that problem. And I live on eleven thirty-one Federal Street, we have almost eight acres of land and five acres of it is wetlands. So I'm used to dealing with the towns and the wetlands, you being respectful of that area.
Okay. What is your, what is your waste disposal method?
When we say waste, are we talking dog poop?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's an easy one. It gets picked up and it gets disposed of in a dumpster that will be picked up, I would assume, every two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, we have buckets with covers in the kennel area and the playrooms. And they're utilized all day long, at the end of the day, they're dumped into the dumpster. So, my employees are instructed that they pick up dog poop instantly for a number of reasons. One, some of the other dogs are poop eaters, so we need to get it off of there.
Okay. And, you know, the licensing and everything is gonna be, you'll, you know, you'll make sure that you meet all applicable state, local
Applicable.
Town laws, okay.
Right, so I provided you with the, the city clerk's information for the kennel license.
If I can ask you something, Jamie? With what you gave me, so I'm assuming that we would have to do something similar to what we did in Hadley, which is before we opened, they need to come down, they need to inspect it, make sure it's
Right, so the only hiccup is that we don't have an animal control officer. Um, so I don't know, it said, um, in the ordinances that she gave me, that animal control officers should do the inspection. We have some joint, uh, animal control inspection due to the same thing with Westfield. So it might take a little bit more coordination to make that inspection happen. Um, and then you would bring proof of that inspection to the City Clerk who then answer your issue with the kennel license. And that would all have to happen before you're allowed to open.
Okay.
And then it has to happen annually as well.
That's fine, uh, my only concern is we're looking at trying to, you know, purchase this and then I've got a huge mortgage payment. So, my goal was to try and get this retrofitted and up and running as soon as possible, which I'm not saying, you know, a few days, but depending on how difficult it is to coordinate with the animal control officer to get the inspection done.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, if we vote tonight and then there's a, Jamie has to write it up and we submit it to the town clerk, get stamped, there's then a twenty-day review period. So if there's anybody who wasn't here who decides to watch this lovely show on TV and decide that they like it so much they wanna tune in every week, they, they get a chance to appeal any decision that we make.
Okay.
Provided that that doesn't happen, then it, you get a letter that says, okay, you've been approved or recalled. And then at that point, you go to the New Hampshire County of Deeds, boom. Well, and I don't know how that's gonna work because if you don't own it at that point, whether you can actually do the deed, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
So the, the, um, the special use permit will run with the land. So, you're the applicant, currently not the owner. If, when you go to file it with registry of deeds and you're still not the owner of the property, that's okay, you can file it with, I believe, the owner's permission and then it'll get attached to the deed. And then when you do become the owner, it'll be on the record already of having gone through that process because it runs with the land, not the owner.
Now, does that mean that you can't go ahead and call the animal control officer earlier?
Not at all. Because, you know, it's no different than if you were wanting to build something. We could say, you can do that, but you're doing it at your own risk. Understand that, you know, if after twenty days, somebody does appeal that decision, that's a decision that was made and, and, you know, if you decided to move forward without, you know, the final decision, that's your, that's up to you, but
Okay.
Yes, sir?
You said after twenty days, you mean within twenty days?
Oh, I'm sorry, within the twenty, yeah, yeah.
'Cause we, we, as a family, we're moving forward, we have an auction planned, we just wanna make sure that it's all done, you know? 'Cause we, there's five of us involved in the property.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Aren't you glad we didn't all show up?
That's right. We made these people look painless.
You should see her sister.
There's nothing wrong with my sister.
Is there anything else we can?
Okay, I don't have any other questions?
It's pretty straightforward. Basically, nothing's gonna change, except there's gonna be some dogs there.
Yeah, okay.
Or dogs I'm usually at.
Well, and, and the neighbors don't seem to be concerned, so.
Well, there aren't really many neighbors.
Well, that is also why I included the letters from our butters.
And I picked the two butters that have their doors open all the time. So if anybody was gonna hear them, they would've.
All right.
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak?
Oh, all right, so, who's making a motion?
Oh, I can do it.
You can. I make a motion that we approve the application by Christine Pratt of Wagging Tails Animal Services on eleven thirty-one Federal Street in Belcher Town seeking the special permit to operate a commercial horse, stable, and dog daycare, boarding, training, grooming, and related ancillary activity, uh, at thirty Florence Road.
Second of all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
That's one lot smoother than the first half of the meeting, huh?
Like I said, I ate my peas first.
We could've given
The first people another forty-five minutes.
Thank you, I will be seeing you.
Yep.
So, in
Why don't we put the
Okay, hold on. All right, uh, we're gonna, uh, our next meeting will be November twentieth at six P M. Uh, with our first item of agenda, the continuation of Chris Lee and Backyard A D Us. And any other applicants that may apply? Votion to just, uh, adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.